All those able to stand for the pledges.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, get up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's a free bond for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and self-adequacy.
Thank you. Brittany, will you do the vote?
Yes.
Here.
Yes. Here.
Here. Okay, next on the agenda is the minutes of October 28th, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept, or rather approve, the minutes from Monday, October 28th, 2024.
Got it, Ken. Motion has been made in seconds. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. The public to address the board. This is the time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the agenda, any issue or matter of the town. You tend on addressing the board at this time, we actually do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company slash institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than thirty minutes. Each individual will be given three minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements by may or may have others. These are just your comments of board chair, discussion organ, and any issue may not take place at this time. The chair or their designated may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make that request at this time. The board chair may grant this request. Address comments to the board chair be concise. We are meeting in person and making this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we are meeting in person, we will not be here swamped for any technical difficulties. So if you would like to be sure of participating, please attend in person. If anyone wants to address any items on the agenda. None? Okay. Number six, a special election for vacant select board seats. I'd like to start this off by saying after the last meeting, when John raised some questions, I talked to our town lawyer. And he said she was satisfied with everything in place and we could go ahead and proceed with that. So that made me satisfied, so.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we call a special election for the vacant select board seats on Monday, February 3rd, 2025.
Is there a second on that?
Three.
Okay. Motion's been made in seconds. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got one question.
Sure.
Another, how much is this gonna cost the taxpayers?
Um, so we did a rough estimate.
Rough estimate, good.
Um, we were looking at about thirty-eight hundred dollars, John, and that would be including all the costs, including labor, um, just not including mail-in ballots.
That's another, that's good.
Yeah, so.
That's like another two thousand dollars.
Well, I mean, I think that's something that we might discuss in the future. Um, the thing we talked last week. We presented was, um, check that it was a contested race, then mail-in ballots would not be necessary. Um, so, but that's your choice, so completely a hundred percent in my side of that one. Um, when we talked about it last week, so I guess the one complication was the fact that the mail-in ballots, um, to apply for. So if you recall, like a few months ago, actually the state sent out little postcards for towns during the worst of the year and asked folks if they wanted to see the mail-in ballot. Then you just check the box and decide your name, you know, postcard that's supposed to pay that in the mail. And you read out, so the state considered that little postcard application. So you have to go, well, I have to mail it out. And all the mail-in ballots.
You have to play again, that's just your thing?
So the mail-in ballots, yeah, so if somebody checked the box that said all the elections, and that meant the March 5th presidential primary, the September 3rd, and the November, it meant everything. And we actually did that in Florida in the may elections as well.
But it doesn't cover this election.
So it doesn't because the applications, they're all, they go by the calendar there. So they expire in December, very first. So that's.
Disappointing.
Yeah, that's not to say that we can't have mail-in ballots. I think some of the other ways and avenues that we discussed were we put on website, we put a line down, we advertised senior center, we would post it at town hall, um, a Facebook page, somebody, like just, I think we would get the word out and say, there's a Republican election, if you'd like a mail-in ballot, we have to apply. But it is a bit of a process, I'm not gonna lie to you.
Yeah.
Is it doable? It absolutely is. Um, a ballot is roughly a dollar two.
Dollar fifty?
A dollar two, one oh two. Um, I think.
Thousand ballots would be a thousand dollars added on to your thirty-eight hundred.
Thousand ballots, yeah. Yeah, maybe a little bit more because of labor, um, but I don't think, we don't usually get a thousand people by a thousand in local election.
Well, this could be contested.
Yeah.
And it could be five or six people run it all, didn't you know?
Yeah, no, it definitely can, so I think I guess we would revisit that, but I'm glad that you guys also. I will make sure that nomination papers are ready to pull in my office tomorrow morning, and I think a clock will be open. Um, and folks, we have until like it drops and deadlines, I think about thousand and. Um, so folks would have each of them tomorrow to pull their papers and get their signatures. We have them back to clerk's office for certification, um, by December 24th, by Christmas Eve. So you have a couple weeks, I mean, it's only twenty signatures, it's not hard. Um, and again, we'll make sure that word gets out, um, we'll check, we'll check to all this up, if you guys have any suggestions. It would be really hard to send like those funds to address single birthday.
I guess so.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't know that we would get that much interest.
Or if worse comes to worse, people can still vote personally.
Of course, of course.
Just one final thing in time. Do we have any? It comes and goes in the art forms, and I sense that we may have some kind of a balance in there now. Positive balance. Is it possible to use any money to fund this election?
Uh, the money we would be spending is, you'd be spending after December 31st. So that's, that's the, the last time that we have to actually, uh, have the money.
I mean, if we, uh, go for an election right now, I mean, the election process is underway, I mean, it's being spent now, not after the first year. I don't see no problem with that, I mean.
I think.
I'm just looking for ways not to impact this budget with all the transfer from the finance committee someday or town meeting action.
Uh, thank you for that, but, uh, unfortunately, we're at a stage in our book where the money has to not only be committed, uh, but also actually, uh, spent. It could be in the form of a purchase order, but most of the expenses probably the election workers sell. So that won't happen until the election.
Alright.
Yeah, thank, thank you for the.
We'll sort some of the expenses that we just had, like reverse out three thousand dollars for the budget expenses.
We can, um.
I don't know if that's possible, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, we can, we can look at that for.
That's creative.
December meeting, we'll.
Right.
We'll, we'll have more money to spend in December.
You wouldn't have to work it out. I didn't even know what we were getting.
I think we would, we would all support, you know, the use of our funds for this. Um, if you can reallocate some of our funds to your current expenses, so that would offset the future expense of the special election.
Yeah, so if you have outstanding. But I was trying to say, well.
I don't have anything else to add.
Yeah.
Everything that we're November 5th at this point, everything was paid.
Okay.
We have a thousand dollar grant coming in from Homeland Security to bring those four rich officers. Um, that's the only thing that's not, we haven't gotten that, but we're gonna expect it to take a little bit of time.
Well, we can talk, if there, if there are any expenses you can make before December 31st, any, uh, purchases, uh, vendors or services.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those, okay. Number seven, appointment gratification, Mr. Hudson.
Yes, we had a bit of a scare last week, though. One of our assessors had a rather serious medical issue. Just at the time when we needed two assessor's signatures for the excess taxes. And we were in danger of missing the deadline that we needed to submit something to the Department of Revenue. Uh, I do know, uh, this, uh, Carl McKinney is the town administrator for Clarksburg. He is also an assessor, and I was talking with him at a manager's event. And, uh, he mentioned that he would be willing to serve as a signatory if we needed a signatory. So we will need one, even though we're going to be hiring a, uh, even though we have hired an assessor's clerk who will be training to become an assessor. That takes months to happen because they have to, uh, pass a course, an introductory course with DOR, before they can sign things. So in the event that this happens again, I thought it would be safe to have another signatory, just in case this sort of thing happened again. So, and, and temporary assessor isn't really a, uh, a term, but I, I did want to stress that this was going to be a, a temporary appointment just, um, through the end of May, when we, uh, believe we're going to have our, our next assessor ready to, uh, ready to sign documents.
Does calling him a temporary disappointment, calling him a temporary assessor, legitimize his signatory ability?
Uh, appointing him as an assessor would, yes, so he would actually be an assessor. Temporary should probably be in parentheses.
Yeah.
Just, just to emphasize that it's, it's not meant to be a permanent appointment.
Yeah, maybe you gotta, we gotta scratch that word, and we all understand that temporarily.
Yes.
So the motion's not going to include temporary?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the appointment of Carl McKinney as assessor effective November 26th, 2024 through May 26th, 2025.
Okay. Hey, a motion's been made in seconds. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Okay, I'd like to open up the ever-source public hearing at this time. Travis.
Evening, Travis Walsh, here in the gap of ever-source energy. I'll elect a petition for two hundred and ten feet of underground conduit and three-phase cable to cross South Street and terminate at the existing pole, the streetlight pole in front of 192.
Where?
Yeah, 192.
Whereabouts is that?
So directly across from the crane company headquarters, the front offices.
Ah, there's you.
I'm on the opposite side, Mr. Reddick, so I live down.
Thank you.
You got a copy of the? That should be right there, Dan. Right here. Thanks. So, give you a little bit of a background, our existing cable crosses through the parking lot of that crane company's front office, which I believe was the old South Street connection to Main Street. And we want to replace that cable, it's gonna be a higher voltage cable, it's at least thirty, forty years old, it's with faults twice. It's on the last leg, it's kind of a ticking time bomb at this point. And it's also going to be associated with a larger project to tie the circuitry for Dalton that feeds up West Sutonic Street to Pittsfield Circuit that is terminated at Taco Bell. So it'd be trenching all the way up South Street, you know, tied, and so should there be an outage on South Street, we'd be able to backbeat from Pittsfield.
Hey. We know for a fact that the, that's due to the Department of Transportation, it's gonna rebuild that intersection in the near future.
While it be around about, I guess.
No, no, well, it's been right, well, this, well, this, whatever you guys are doing, interfere with their intersection?
So I have to petition them all the way from Taco Bell up even beyond, up to that's really in their state permitting. And there is no mention within the next two years of them reviving that portion. So they said I would be clear, I would be clear with those council.
Well, so we're gonna get it for another two years at least.
Yeah.
That's a price.
Far as I'm concerned.
Okay, any other questions?
So.
Who's state for?
The underground at, it's, uh, 192 South Street, is it just a, the town, uh, right away there, or the town?
Yeah, it's in the town taking. Yeah, so we cross over this state petition, uh, road. And once we enter the South Street, it would be the town taking, and it's about a hundred and ten feet. That would be within the town taking, that would go to the existing streetlight pole.
Uh huh.
You can see the circle there is the existing streetlight pole, bring underground cable to it, it would rise up, and then we'd continue down to South Street, even overhead as it is.
What impact would it be to, uh, 192?
Um, it'd probably be within that first two feet next to the sidewalk. Okay, that would be trash.
I assume they were notified via butters were notified?
Yes.
Have we received any comments from the butters?
No.
Phone, email, and, uh, well, there's no, anybody, um, here to speak on the petition from the public? No? Okay. Fair enough.
Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I find that this necessary to, uh, upgrade the infrastructure, electrical infrastructure of town. And with that finding, I move that we approve the petition to install, maintain underground lines for the transmission of energy, um, let's see, on, on South, at South Street and Main.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made in seconds. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm too excited, we want to check.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we close ever-source public hearing.
Your second?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Why we sign, and why we're signing that, I'll go to number nine for accepting of grants and donations for council on aging and the senior center.
Yes, you have the three, um, the three, uh, grants and the one, uh, two grants and one donation, uh, to the council on aging and senior center in your packets. Formula grant is of course annual. The, uh, health, wellness, and community grant, um, is at the initiative of the council on aging. And then there was, uh, at least to me, an unexpected donation, uh, from the estate of Robert B. Neff for just over twenty thousand dollars.
Excellent. Okay, I'm gonna take these, uh, one at a time. Um, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the formula grant for the amount of fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars for the council on aging.
Okay. A motion's been made in seconds. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Okay, so move.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the Central Berkshire Fund of the Berkshire Tocotnick Foundation for Health, Wellness, and Community Grant in the amount of three thousand, five hundred dollars for the council on aging.
Sir. Okay, motion's been made in seconds. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept a donation from the estate of Robert B. Neff in the amount of twenty thousand, eight hundred, twenty-two dollars and eighteen cents for the senior center.
Sir. Okay, a motion's been made in seconds. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, well, us to listen asking today, if this money goes to the senior center for operational purposes in the program, et cetera, et cetera, or does it go to the friends in there, who are a separate entity, friends of the senior center? I said, it doesn't take anything about friends in there, so it must go to the senior center proper, right?
Yes, they do have a donations account.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Y'all set your gun?
Hmm?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Okay.
And I just want to thank the estate of Robert B. Neff for the generous donation to the Dalton Senior Center. Thank you very, very much, and there's, uh, more information for the board members in the packet here. If they want to read.
Okay, number ten, seventh, a third quarter franchise fee for Dalton Community Cable Association.
Uh, you have in your package the, uh, usual quarterly franchise fee, this time twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred, ninety-four dollars and twenty-nine cents from Charter Communication, uh, and a formal request to transfer that money from the town to the Dalton Community Cable Association for the running of DCTV, which is, uh, airing our meeting as we speak.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request to transfer the franchise fee of twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred, ninety-four dollars and twenty-nine cents recently received from Charter Communication to the Dalton Community Cable Association. It's our understanding that this is the third quarter fee for July, August, and September of 2024.
Sir. Yeah, motion's been made in seconds. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Okay. Number eleven, agreement with Pittsfield for veteran service agent, Mr. Hudson.
Yes, I've been talking about this for some time. I'm pleased to present you with the final agreement. Um, it has been vetted by town council and approved. Uh, this will allow veteran services to continue uninterrupted in Dalton. Uh, there will be a slight reduction in service until July. Right now, they will have someone at the senior center only once a month. Um, after July, I expect the weekly presence at, uh, at the senior center here, which is where the veteran service officer meets clients.
Tom, I think it's important to note that in the event of a, uh, emergency, but in a parentless matter, a veteran didn't go to the Pittsfield office.
Yes, thank you, uh, and it's left to mention that, uh, the Pittsfield office, as of the signing of this, will be open to any, any Dalton resident. Uh, and, and, uh, and, and anytime when they're open, so if someone can make it into Pittsfield, they can, they can, they can go there, they can call, they can email them, uh, we will be in, uh.
I think during city hall, right?
They are.
I'm sure.
Yeah. Second floor.
Anything else acceptable?
Yes, it is. And this will be, uh, this will start on the date of execution, so, uh, we sign it and send it into Pittsfield, and the mayor signs it, and that's when the services, uh, these official services begin.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the municipal agreement between the city of Pittsfield and the town of Dalton for the director of the Veteran Services Department.
Okay. Okay. Alright, a motion's been made in seconds. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Okay, it's a sign that, Dan, you want to start?
He's at the sign of one, right?
I think everyone has to sign it.
Period. Item twelve, corporate update in recessions. Mr. Hudson.
Uh, yes, we are almost at the end of this road. Uh, we had, um, we have had a lot of, uh, commitments and resissions and recommitments, and, uh, it's been, uh, a really great thing for the town. There are, as you might expect, uh, another series of, uh, formal votes to take to make sure that we adequately document how we're doing things and that it's gone through the, the proper process. The, uh, recisions we have, uh, twenty thousand dollars from a transfer station compactor commitment. Rather than buying, uh, new compacters, the DPW superintendent was able to negotiate the sale of existing equipment from Casella, which has certain advantages. Uh, at some point, we will want to replace that equipment, but it's functioning adequately now. And we don't need to buy new equipment as we originally thought we might. So that's a very welcome change. Of course, that then opens up the question of what to spend that money on, and I provide, oh, and, uh, also, for town hall engineering, um, I really jumped on that first, uh, preliminary engineering and cost estimate study for HVAC, uh, for the town hall. And I forgot, and I actually paid for that because it happened between select board meetings with the, uh, town hall engineering, the 401 account, uh, with some, uh, over three thousand dollars added from the reserve fund because it wasn't, uh, just happened to be good timing. So I could do that, I did it, went ahead, got it done quickly, but that also left more money in Arco. So what I've been doing now is, uh, oh, and that, the, um, is finding new items to spend the money we have left overall. And I have, uh, three things for that. The, um, the twenty thousand dollars from the transfer station compactor commitment, we had mentioned, um, that would be, uh, a perfect fit for the fire truck insert.
Right.
Which I got a, I got board agreement on last time, but there was not a formal vote, uh, on that, uh, at least in a minute, so I would like.
That would be all of that now.
Well, uh, I would like a formal vote on that again, um, and on action or discussion on any, any other Arco items. So this, uh, the total of this will bring us again, five or six thousand, with five or six thousand dollars left. I'll be looking for any recisions from this, some of these numbers are getting a little bit more detailed and precise, so I hope they're gonna be, you know, as close as possible, and I'll come back with, um, a motion next time that I hope will finish off the rest of our Arco funds.
Uh, Tom, we just stopped in.
Yes.
Clear, I'm just mad that we didn't vote, we can have a vote right now.
Oh, sure, sure, there, there's a, there's a series, so it's fine to do that now, sure. And if you have any questions?
Yep.
We have, uh, the acting.
Chief, chief task force.
Yeah.
I think, I'm almost positive, we talked about it anyway.
Oh, yeah.
Sure. Yeah, I thought we did do what we were doing.
Last meeting?
Yeah.
I was not in attendance, so, um, what was the amount?
Twenty thousand dollars for the, uh, being served into the rush truck, right?
You can give it a notice from the back of a pickup and, um, actually, well, it'd be, you know, it had to let it through or anything from the.
Yeah.
Original fire, it's, I, you know, and, uh, uh, this is just pretty much what it is, it's just a self-contained unit that, uh.
It's like an insert in the.
Yeah, you know, if it goes in the back, any type of pickup, that, uh, you know, that we use to get into the woods and as a tank, motorized, pump, holds rail, uh, pretty much just a, uh, firefighting apparatus that we can use that, uh, assists with our forest fire.
I can make the motion.
Okay.
Twenty horsepower skid unit with two hundred gallon water tank, right?
Well, actually, we're, that's just one of the types we've looked at, we're, we're, we're priced at anywhere between sixteen, five, twenty thousand. Uh, we're looking possibly maybe going to three to four hundred gallons, uh, and possibly there's also capability for a foam. So there's, there's a whole bunch of, uh, options available, and, um, so we're working on that right now, we know we're under the uh, gun gear to get a purchase. gun gear to get a purchase order in for this ARPA funds and whatever we don't use to return.
No.
Yes.
I think it's getting a little late to gain to be, be returning any more money to the town.
Well, I
I'll come back on the fifteenth with the, with the whatever they haven't spent
Right.
or to rescind that
Definitely return.
additional amount.
Okay.
As usual.
Absolutely. So.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, approve the expenditure of twenty thousand dollars ARPA funds, uh, to the Dalton Fire District for the acquisition of a, uh, skid unit, uh, size to be determined.
Sir?
Okay, most have been made in seconds. Ready for the discussion? Yeah, I'd like to thank you right now for doing that with the, especially with the fire going on.
Well, yeah, I'm sure pretty everyone was expecting that you were going to have that, uh, mess in their backyard. So I'd like to hope that when we get this, that they don't need it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All those
Lend it back?
Sure.
Okay.
Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Folks?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, you. Don't go through it. See you guys soon.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
And the next item.
So.
The, uh, board had voted five thousand dollars for office equipment. We sent a note around and got eight thousand dollars worth of requests. Uh, since there was some left over, uh, we thought that we would ask for the balance, three thousand forty-two dollars and fifty cents for office equipment. You can see the, the, uh,
Items.
items there. I will mention that, uh, Alyssa was quite bearish in her selection and that, uh, these, uh, this is not, uh, these are not new pieces of furniture, but they're all good pieces of furniture.
These, does this have to go on the fifth? Do we use?
No.
Buy a piece by piece or whatever this is. Okay?
Yeah. Before we move into more of the expenditures, I just want to tackle the recisions as a motion?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, do that.
I didn't do that yet.
Skip over those.
Yeah, there was a, you know, a, a, a move to, uh, approve the fire expenditure, fire department expenditure. Okay. Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, I move that we rescind twenty thousand dollars in ARPA funds uh, that were allocated for the tri- transfer station compactor commitment on March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And a final decision, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we rescind twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars of ARPA funds that were allocated for town hall engineering.
Sir?
Okay, Washington made in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Folks? Okay.
All right. You want to walk us through the rest of those, Tom, or?
Sure. Well, I just, uh, presented the first item for office furniture and equipment.
I can make one motion, but I probably should break out each item for each
Okay.
expenditure, but I will make it as one motion. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, uh, expenditure of twenty-six thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents in ARPA funds to be allocated to following items. Three thousand forty-two dollars and fifty cents for the balance of office furniture and equipment. Nine thousand and eighty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents for IT workstations and firewall replacement. Nine thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars for Department of Public Works' equipment, tools, and gear. And finally, four thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars for new Department of Public Works' lockers.
Sir?
Okay, motion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Uh, I will just mention, sorry, I should have said under discussion, the, the IT equipment. That's going to cut down the amount that we were expecting to ask for at the next annual town meeting. We had had a total amount presented to us and decided to split it between two years. This is half of that.
Oh, good. Excellent. Okay. Next item. Set the meeting date for tax classification hearing.
It is that time of the year again. And we are ready, uh, on the town site as of today, actually. Um, we, we have everything submitted to the Department of Revenue. And we look forward to presenting that to you. Uh, we were not ready to present it tonight, uh, but we, we do have the figures now.
You have to advertise it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, the assessors will advertise it, and we will have it on our meeting as well. And we are hoping to be able to do that a week from tonight on Monday, December second. It would be helpful, if you can all do that tonight, to have it at seven-thirty so that Sue Cozieri, our principal assessor, uh, who only works very part-time for us, because she works in other communities, can make it. She will be attending another assessor's hearing in Peru that evening and would very much appreciate a little extra time, uh, to be able to get down here.
So are you available next Monday?
On the second, it'll be a week from tonight.
It's gonna be there.
I'm available.
Is that gonna be the only thing on the agenda?
Unless the chair finds
At this point, yes.
Yeah, at this point, yes.
I
We can try to make a commitment to keep that the only item on the agenda for everyone's
Let's keep that out.
Well, if something urgent from
If, if something urgent does come up, we would reserve the right to add it. Um, but, uh,
Yeah, very quickly.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we set a meeting date for the tax classification hearing on Monday, December second, at seven-thirty PM at the Senior Center.
Okay.
Is, is there enough time to advertise this between now?
Yes, it's It's a forty-eight hour Yeah. Yeah.
All right, thank you, John. A motion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And?
Folks? All right, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda. Town manager's scorecard evaluation. Yes.
Uh, there are, there are, uh, three documents up the floor. Uh, the first entitled short form policies and procedures. This is the, um, detailed document, uh, that is in place at this time for town manager evaluations. And, uh, the, the procedure is, um, something that has been drawn up before. So that's, um, that gives a lot of timelines that, uh, had been developed earlier. There is also something that goes along with this that is titled Dalton Town Manager Position, Measurements, Plan, and Review. And that was the scoring document that is currently in place. And in my time, I, uh, had a very similar but slightly different, uh, document, which is meant to receive items from the job description, specifically in the job description. And you take something in the job description and you put it in one of the cells. And then the next thing in the job description goes in the next cell. So this is a document meant to be populated by items from the job description, which are in the final document in that packet. And however the board wants to deal with that is fine. I just thought I would give you those, uh, documents as a basis for your discussion.
Well, I, we don't discuss it. We, I thought we just told about the end of the mission, Mr. Chairman.
Well, it's a question of
What form do you want to use?
Which documents you'd like to use. Um, in my training, such as it has been in human resources, I've been told that keeping a performance evaluation as objective as possible is a good thing. And that using the job description itself, which is the actual requirements of the position, is a good way to get that done, which is why I've included those documents.
So what are you suggesting, Mr. Chair?
We have this one?
Yeah.
Or this one?
So, yeah, so we've got the Position Measurement Plan and Review, which was the document that would have been used previous to, um, the evaluation that was developed by the former chair of the board. Is that correct?
No, this, this predates that.
That's what I mean, used prior to that.
Right, right. Yes.
Okay. Uh, and then there's this suggestion, an idea to use this job description to populate a form like this. Each responsibility populating this form, and then a score would be developed for each of those responsibilities. Um, I, I don't object to that necessarily. I mean, I think that's ultimately what you need to evaluate an employee on is the effectiveness in meeting, uh, the requirements of the job description. At the end of the day, at the same time, when I look at this Position Measurement Plan and Review, um, I wonder how much of here comes from the job description?
Uh, I don't know. It certainly doesn't come from my job description. It might have come from a previous job description.
Okay.
What I noticed was, uh, a number of subjective judgments that were called for in, um, in the document. A lot of, um, is this done effectively? Or, uh, is this realistic? And those are things that people could have different ideas of criteria for and things like that. I don't and that, that's just the only thing that I would say about
Who's gonna populate the information from the job description to the second form?
I, I could, I could, uh, I could do that.
Yeah, there were choices you have with that second form. You could take a paragraph and split it into two, or you could, you know, some, some of the things in the job description are larger chunks that, that probably shouldn't be well condensed.
Maybe even, uh, Bob and I can sit down with it at some point, do it together. Something planned now?
Well, we haven't decided yet which one we're gonna do.
Well, yeah, I know. No motion made.
I just want to say that I'm in favor of the existing form because of the familiarity. Hasn't we done this before? Last year, I know it was a little, uh, kerfuffle on the chairman's part, but something down this place. But I'd prefer this, the existing format, because I think it covers more categories. And, uh, and again, the familiarity, it's, it's easy to do. Check the box. And then the chairman or vice chairman, validation, correlation.
Certainly, so
But that instead
Give you an example.
Yeah.
From the job description, coordinates town operational policies, rules, regulations, procedures, and submits them to selection for approval.
Hmm?
So I would go in this box here. You could make comments, and you could give them, you know, basically a rating. Similar to here, we could even attach a number to each of those if we'd like. So it wouldn't really look, it wouldn't look much different than this necessarily. It just would take this criteria and impose it.
Nope. Yeah, I'm a candidate with question. So this information is going to be printed in here?
Mm-hmm. This.
We don't have to print it. We don't have to do that.
No.
That was my concern.
We do it on Zoom, don't we?
I'm a swat.
Yeah.
It comes to writing.
We would, we would, uh, transpose this into this form.
Yeah.
And then disseminate it to everyone who needs to fill out the evaluation. So how about, um, Bob and I take a crack at this and then present this to you to, uh, to approve or
Yeah, if it's under review.
Yeah.
It would not be explained. I thought we were going to have to write things in here.
No.
Okay. I have no problem with that.
Mark?
I'm good with that.
I don't think a motion's necessary. We're just making a commitment to, uh, do this work and come back with a proposal, a new proposed evaluation to prepare for this, and then we can make a decision.
Sounds good.
When's the next, uh, meeting?
Sixteenth.
December fifteenth. Fifteenth, okay.
Oh.
We can get it done.
Wait a minute. I think it's the sixteenth.
Yes. Okay. Yes. All right. Bob and I will take care of that.
Okay.
All right.
It's your sixteenth, right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Thank you. Town manager update.
Thank you. The town received one bid for the police station feasibility study. It was from the firm Humes Jakunsky, which has designed a number of police stations. Members of the advisory committee are acting as the review committee for the submission, scoring the proposal and reporting their results to the chair, who will compile them and report the final result. And I'll add from what I have written here, they're also coming up with questions and will engage in a, in a back and forth with the architect. And then there will be a fee negotiation, and then it will be ready to be acted on. Uh, Brian Humes designed the Williamstown Police Station, and so has good and known credentials. Uh, the candidate for conservation agent has offered to volunteer some time to get to know the town and the commission prior to being appointed, which is extraordinarily generous. Will probably need a formal waiver of liability, but aside from that, it looks as though we'll be able to take care of some business, which is, which of course is slack during the winter months anyway.
Yeah.
Very slow.
Now, regarding the CRA electric vehicle charges, one is up and running, and the other had a technical issue that's being sorted out. These will be the fastest level-two chargers in town when they are fully operational. Mrs. Hall, school approached the town to see whether we could provide an unpaid internship for students interested in town planning. Uh, the town planner and I have gone through the Cory-Sory process and expect to start working with the intern next week. The ADA committee has been learning to buy accessible tables, table, uh, for the three most visited offices in town hall. The assessors, the town collector, and the town clerk. The counters would give those in wheelchairs the ability to have their chairs fit under the counter and do their work at that height. A state agency that assists those in jail and prison to learn skills, Mass Core, gave us a quote for ten thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars, fifty-four cents. We have now gotten an FY twenty-five musical ADA improvement grant for that amount and can give all three offices new counters and storage for their offices. Uh, I'm pleased to report that I spoke with the food manager at the stationary factory who reported that their relations with the health agent are much better and that they are working together productive.
Excellent.
I would like to select, oh, I, I, this is the tax classification hearing. Uh, I've gotten some community interest in looking at uses for the opioid settlement funds. We need a community group to meet, to help determine how best to use the funds. So it's great to get some interest. We had had none until very recent. Uh, given the holidays coming up, I believe it will be early next year before there are any meetings, but that allows us to have another round of, to a publicity for the opportunity. That's my report for tonight.
Okay. No questions for Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, future dead items.
Mr. Chairman, we had a request from a resident, Mr. Bellagina, that's why, about their interest in purchasing the, uh, remaining parcel that's non-APR on Daymount, I mean, Westmount or Northmount, wherever it is. And, uh, we said we'd take that up sometime down the road when uh, pardon property had been conveyed. And I'm just suggesting that we, uh, take it up in January sometime. And, uh, in the meantime, I think the one issue is, is in fact the proposed park up there a dead issue? As far as I know, it is, but it'll be a few times to find it out. As far as I know, it is, but it'll be up to Utah to find it out. And the second thing I would suggest is that you establish a ballpark figure for it by using the assessor's price. Not I don't think we need to put it out for
Appraisal?
Appraisal, yeah.
Well, the thing about that I want to say is that piece of land you'll be able to put a building on.
Yes, not, it's not APR, yes.
It's not APR.
You understand their position. If you actually look at the property map, they're surrounded on four sides by
APR.
By, well. Well, is Dick, is Dick's part that owns the driveway, is that APR property?
No, no, it's not. The APR, our, that parcel we own has a right of way into it.
Yeah, right.
Through the APR.
Through the APR.
Yes.
So should we just put it on the first meeting in January agenda to have this discussion? Or maybe Tom can bring some more information?
Well, I'd like Tom to just look into the that park that we talked about.
The North.
Yeah. I think it's dead in the water, but.
There's a, there just an FY that was a committee set up.
Yeah, I think they have met years.
Met.
No.
They were, their work is transferred into the Open Space Recreation Committee and as far as I know, has not continued within that committee.
There isn't much citizen in Dalton interest in a park up in the mountain because they did, we've done that once before. It was a swimming park hole and all that. And for lack of patronage by young people, it just died out of buying. Could be cause it's inaccessible to the center of town population. So I, I think it's, but Tom, you have to give it your official blessing. It's dead.
I'd say we're requesting an update on the status of Norton Martin Mountain Park.
Figures, yeah.
Uh, work.
It's North Mountain. It's North Mountain Park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As, as a part of this.
And well, ask the assessors for it. That's easy now. If anybody value it, we can take it from here. We can set our own twice on it, just like you said with the Barden property.
If we're sowing land, there's a process to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we'll be at first meeting in January.
Whatever you.
So I think we can remove update on BOH, Board of Health complaint from future agenda items this time.
Yeah.
Proposed policy for signs on town property. Did that ever come back before the board?
No, it's still working on it.
You still working on that? Okay, no problem. Update on Warren Solar Citizen Solar Panel Project. Is there anything?
It was updated last meeting.
Oh, okay.
It's all the works.
I should read that.
Yeah, the citizen of Citizens Energy is working with EverSource regarding an easement issue.
Okay, maybe we could remove that from the future agenda items, just clean up the list.
Yep.
Update on Walker Brook. Should we keep that on there? Probably. We'll need it updated some future time. I don't know how much work's gonna happen on that, but we can leave it there for now. That's, those are my only comments.
Okay, any ads? Okay. Items not anticipated by forty-eight hours before the meeting. Remarks of the select board.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah, great.
Stay safe.
Okay. So recently announcements? Want to know more about what's happening in Dalton? Sign up for the monthly newsletter, just come out today. Paper Town News. Please visit the town website for more information. The Dalton Police Department is reminding citizens of Dalton, the winter parking ban is built into effect November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, will be in effect at April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, between the hours of one A M and six A M. During this time, there will be no parking allowed on the streets. There are numerous committees and boards with vacancies, including the Dalton Housing Authority. If you're interested in Dalton Housing Authority, please contact Sue Gregory at six eight four two four nine three. For other vacancies, please see the town website for more information or reach out to the town manager's office. The town is contracted with Colonial Power to provide an electricity plan for town residents, which have the results of the prices lower than current EverSource prices. For more details to opt out or in, visit the town websites, call the town manager's office. The town of Dalton currently has one part-time job opportunity for an assistant building and ground superintendent. Please visit the town website or contact the town manager's office at four one three six eight four six one one one, extension two oh two for more information. The CRA's light-up-the-holidays celebration will be on Saturday, December seventh, from four to eight P M. The Santa Parade will take place on Sunday, December eighth, from five to seven. The next meeting of the select board, which is scheduled to take place on Monday, November
Sixteen.
December sixteenth.
Well, this, we have the one next Monday.
The second.
Oh, December second, yeah.
December second.
Seven thirty.
At seven thirty. With an option for remote participation. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session and not return to open session for reason number seven. Comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, namely to review and approve executive session minutes, and reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining Dalton Patrol Officers Union.
Okay, roll call. Oops, I'm sorry. Yes, a roll call, go, Mark?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob, yes. All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You not returning all the session?
I guess that.
Roll call? Did you do roll call for the executive session?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
My first motion handled everything.
Good day.
Yeah. I said not to return.